First, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'm a disabled Vietnam veteran and I had a problem with the VA, just like so many others. I've received excellent service at the Madison VA.
Very good. Thank you.
But when I was in Vietnam, I was wounded from enemy fire and received a Purple Heart there and left Vietnam after 65 days. About two years ago, I applied to become a member of the Purple Heart Organization. Applied, and they said, "There's no record of your Purple Heart Award." I contacted the Records Bureau of the Archives, and they said, "We have no record of that. Gather the paperwork, send it in." Two years later, I still don't have that award.
Joe, we can help you try to get it. Joe is going to give you Privacy Act release. And fill it out, and whatever records you have, you know, with your service number, you know, if you still have your discharge papers, stuff like that, send it to my Brookfield office.
Or could I give it to Joe before you leave?
Yeah, you can give it to Joe before he leaves.
We have a lot of it with us.
But, you know, if you've got your discharge papers, you know, make a photocopy of them because that would be very helpful in tracking it down. You know, dealing with this is kind of like dealing with a computer, you know, garbage in, garbage out. So the real problem is, is that most of the records from World War II, Creole, and Vietnam burned in a fire in the warehouse in St. Louis in 1973. And there are ways that we can reconstruct the records from things that are in the Pentagon and elsewhere. But, you know, and sometimes it takes a while. I think what happened is you should have gotten a response by now. You know, we do these requests quite often for veterans who did receive awards and commendations and want to have them, you know, even with medals. You know, I've, you know, awarded Bronze Stars and Silver Stars to veterans who either never got them or lost them. But it takes a while. So again, if you have got any paperwork at home, I would, you know, strongly urge you to make a photocopy of it and send it to me in the mail. You can give it to Joe if you want to. But again, the more detail I get from you, the quicker we will able to get this resolved.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And the address where you can send it is on the form there. But you've got to sign the Privacy Act release, otherwise Department of Defense won't talk to us.
Okay.
Okay, now who wants to be second?
That's a good question.
Okay, go ahead.
Rick Rich. My question is, how long is this Mueller investigation going to continue? And why does he continue to get free rein and keep changing the scope of the investigation?
The problem with independent and special councils is, once they're appointed, they keep on rolling along like Old Man River. All you need to do is to look at the Starr investigation, where his predecessors were appointed, you know, to look at the Whitewater land deal in Arkansas, and you saw how it developed and developed and developed and developed. And nobody knew where Starr's investigation was expanded to, and nobody knows where Mueller's investigation has been expanded to. Now, he was originally appointed to look at alleged collusion by the Trump campaign with the Russians. There have been no indictments on that issue to date. None. And the Manafort indictments were for crimes that he allegedly committed before Trump even announced he was going to be candidate for president. The General Flynn guilty plea is he pleaded guilty to lying to the FBI on a question the FBI didn't ask. And the reason he had to stop it is that he'd already lost his house and was going broke and trying to fight a criminal indictment that was issued by the world's largest law firm, meaning the United States Department of Justice. I have said it's time for Mueller to wrap it up. He spent $17 million already. The meter is ticking. He ought to issue his report to Congress, let Congress and the public debate it, and leave it at that. And if there was an indictable criminal offense, then he should go to a grand jury and get an indictment.
Thank you.
Who's next? Yes, sir?
Steve Ziegoff from Lake Mills. My question has to do with what appears to be mountain trade war that potentially I fall into. I heard you made a few comments in other settings. I'm distressed again as to what came out of the G7 summit, already heard, local comments here within the states about the adverse effect this is going to have on our farming industry here in Wisconsin, as well as several of our manufacturers. So at what point can Congress, you know, have slowed this down so that we don't become so isolationist that it's really hurting Americans?
Well, first of all, let me say, I do not support Trump's tariffs. And I was one of 101 Republican House members that sent a letter to Trump and the Trade Rep to back off them. No one knows what the unintended consequences will be, but there will be retaliation from our trading partners. And it's not just the Canadians and the Europeans. And there's going to be an impact on farming. You know, I like to bring things a little closer to home. The increased cost of aluminum cans will mean a beer can costs a penny more. And that kind of hits home here in Wisconsin. Answer your question on what can Congress do, effectively very little aside from jawboning. The trade laws for years have given the president the power to impose tariffs without having to go to Congress. Most of the tariffs that have been imposed by previous presidents have been the so-called countervailing tariffs, where an injured industry has proven to the government that a foreign government is subsidizing the competition so that they dump the foreign-made product below cost in the U.S. market. And that is, in my opinion, where a tariff is warranted, basically, so that we can compete on an even keel without the impact of the foreign government subsidy of their own producers. This is not the case here. And since the president has almost unlimited authority that would take a bill passed by Congress to kill the proposed tariffs, I would vote for such a bill. But you know that the president would veto it because it erodes his authority. And there are not the votes in Congress to override the veto. So it's going to have to be public pressure that ends up having him back off. And I'll be honest, I don't know if this is a bargaining ploy to get something else. And it might be because the NAFTA renegotiations have stalled, or whether, you know, it's something that the president is going to stick with. Now, only time will tell. And obviously, he is not bringing into his confidence those of us Republicans who are on the other side of him.
Well, nothing to set us surprised when I guess the primary reason I raise my voices so that you and other representatives in similar settings are hearing, this just isn't playing well for a number of us to have him go the direction that he is.
You know, even before he imposed them, when he was talking about it, you know, I spoke out against them. And the letter was starting to circulate that the 101 Republican representatives ended up signing and sending it to the president and the Trade Rep. You know, I've been around Congress for a while, you know, and I have found regardless of whether we have a Democratic president or a Republican president, usually the president gets along better with the other party in Congress than with his own. That happened to Obama. It happened to Clinton, and it happened to George W. Bush, too. Who's next?
Just one more.
Sure, go ahead.
The brush-up right now with Canada is striking really kind of insanity. Because, you know, over the decades, but then when you knew that there's been a liberal government in Canada, or a conservative government in Canada, a Republican president or Democratic president, we've always been great neighbors. Now suddenly we're just bad with neighbors who have got this undefended border with.
You know, I'm aware of that, and I worked very closely with the Harper government, which was in power for nine years there. You know, my son became a friend of Stephen Harper's, and through him, I became a friend of Stephen Harper's. And there were a lot of things that, you know, the White House and the State Department, both under W. and Obama, ended up being at loggerheads on. And I made a couple of phone calls up there and it got fixed.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. A lot of that had to do with border security and stuff like that. You know, the thing is, is that, you know, we have a lot of joint efforts on border security. For a long time, our Border Patrol agents who carry firearms could not go into Canada because the Canadian law wouldn't let them. And the Canadian Border Patrol is not, does not carry firearms. So that required some coming back and forth and back and forth. It's fixed now. So, you know, the patrols in the St. Lawrence River across the freeway, which hop across the border, you know, all the time. There is not an allegation that the U.S. Border Patrol is committing a crime in Canada when the boat that both countries' agents surround are on their side of the border rather than ours. Who's next? Anybody else?
I have a general interest question.
Sure.
Dan Rich. I moved to this area just a couple of years ago from Racine. And so I'm watching Foxconn with a great deal of interest, and I'm hearing a lot of negatives and positives. From the perspective of a state and the financial relief that we're giving Foxconn, what is your thoughts on the long-term impact of Foxconn for our state?
Well...
Financially and also the lake and chicken water.
Well, you know, the Foxconn deal released the state money in stages, and Foxconn had to produce certain accomplishments that were in the state law, which was passed, before they get the next tranche of money. So they don't get all of the money all at once, and you know, then come default on it. You know, those protections were written in by Governor Walker, you know, in the legislature. Foxconn has the potential of being a boon, particularly in southeastern Wisconsin. We have two problems, you know, which are not federal problems, but are state and local problems to deal with. You know, one is, is that we have a 2.9% unemployment rate. And, you know, that means that there are more employers seeking workers than there are workers that are unemployed. So we do have a worker shortage. And if Foxconn, you know, is to hire the, you know, 10,000 to 20,000 new people, you know, when they're up and running, we don't have them here. And I think that's unfortunate. Now, when they come here, you know, they're going to have to pay Wisconsin income taxes and local property taxes wherever they live. And the state will recoup a lot of money because they're talking about an average wage of $53,000 a year plus benefits. And that's going to mean an awful lot of money that comes in as a result of the state income tax these Foxconn workers will owe. The other problem is education. And one of the things, since the beginning of the talk on Foxconn that I have been preaching, and again, the federal government doesn't have anything to do with this, is that there's got to be more STEM education emphasis, particularly in the Milwaukee and Racine Public Schools on that. Because it's the STEM education that is going to qualify these people for the type of jobs that Foxconn will be hiring them for. And the Milwaukee Public Schools have really been a basket case for 40 or 50 years now. You know, where kids drop out of school, there are functional illiterates that get diplomas that they can't even read. And the most popular course at the downtown campus of M A T C is a remedial reading course for 20-somethings. Now, if you didn't learn how to read in the first and second grade, and you had to wait until you were 20-something, you know, you are not prepared for the information technology-centered economy that we live in today. And if you can't even read the instruction manual on how to operate a computer, you know, how are you going to be able to get a hold on a job? So I'm not so sure that, you know, MPS has gotten the message. But there have been messages that have been given to MPS for most of my adult life. You know, and it used to be we had a newspaper in Milwaukee that raised hell when something was going wrong. We don't have that anymore. We haven't had it for quite a while.
Is there support of Gateway Technical Schools in the Racine County area?
Yeah.
Are they getting extra attention now?
Well, you know, I can't speak to that because, you know, the technical education, you know, there is federal money that goes into technical education. But most of the money to support them either comes from the state or there is a local property tax levy. And all you need to do is pull out your last year's property tax bill, and there's a separate line on how much you have to pay to support the Madison area Technical College. The problem, in my opinion, is not the technical schools. You know, we have one of the best technical school networks in this state. And, you know, some of that is as a result of the German heritage, you know, where they had the gymnasium, where the kids who weren't suitable for a liberal arts education in Germany were given technical education. And, you know, that was the way, you know, technical colleges were started here, particularly in those areas of the state that had a big German immigration, which of course was Milwaukee to begin with. So, you know, the thing is, is that, you know, I've always said, back to the time when I was in the state legislature, that this state cannot afford to turn the technical schools into junior colleges on the California style. You know, we do have two-year campuses of the UW system, you know, which deal with that type of issue. And the technical colleges should emphasize technical education because that's where the UW system was really not created to do, and the technical school system was. So let's make the technical school system teach kids and adults technical education, and the UW system teach kids and adults other kind of education.
Thank you.
Who's next? You let me... Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, I don't know a whole lot, so I'm not going to pretend I do. But I just recently started hearing about, and I'm not even sure how to explain it, something to do with the Obamacare thing and how it might actually be completely apart soon. And I don't know if that was just a stating or whatever. But basically, I'm wondering if you guys in Congress are going to be ready to do something and actually get something going if that does completely go?
Well, you know, Obamacare was falling apart right from the beginning. You know, he said, "You can keep your doctor, you can keep your plan. Everybody's going to get a $2,500 reduction in health insurance premiums," and none of that happened. The House of Representatives last year passed a bill to repeal and replace Obamacare. It failed in the Senate. So what is happening now is that the Congress is repealing and replacing it piecemeal rather than all at once. It should have been done all at once because that way we could have gotten something new up and running and available for the public to look at. And, you know, if they appealed to them, you know, buy into that type of an insurance plan. You know, that didn't happen because of a failure in the Senate. I am still committed to repealing and replacing Obamacare or what's left of it now. But, you know, again, what happened, and this was a flaw in the plan from the beginning, is that if you have a young person who is healthy, he was required by law to buy an Obamacare policy. And the Obamacare policy, you know, it was one size fits all, whether you're old and need a lot of doctoring, or young and don't need much at all. You all kind of paid the same premium on that. So the younger people ended up paying a lot more than they should have or under the policies that they had before Obamacare came in. So they decided not to buy Obamacare. And there was a government mandate, and if they didn't buy Obamacare, then they were fined by the IRS. And the fines were considerably less than what the premiums for Obamacare were, plus the deductibles and the cold pays and things like that. And there were, you know, a couple hundred thousand people in Wisconsin that just simply ignored the law and paid the fine, which meant that Obamacare didn't have the premium payments, whatever they might have been, you know, coming in with low-risk people, actually having to pay for high-risk people. And any casualty insurance operation is like that. You know, it's a risk-sharing scheme. You know, the best example I can give is car insurance. But in car insurance, if you're a lousy driver with a lot of tickets and a lot of accidents, you're going to pay more than somebody similarly situated who is a good driver, who doesn't have any accidents and doesn't have any moving traffic violations. You couldn't do that under Obamacare. So the people, mostly younger people, just broke the law and said, "I'll pay the fine." They paid the fine, and the premiums for the people who stayed under Obamacare keep on going up, up, and away. So Obamacare is now becoming more and more unaffordable for the people who really need to have the Obamacare, again because there was a flawed plan when it started out. Who is next? Going once? Going twice? Yes, sir?
Yeah. It seems like the Republicans used to have a lot of admiration for Robert Mueller when he was head of the FBI. And even voted for him for an extra two years. That was never happened before, for head of FBI. And, you know, he was a veteran, a decorated veteran, and everybody had respect for him. And now it seems that since he's investigating one of their own, they're all going against him. And it seems kind of hypocritical. I'm wondering, what's your take? Do you think that just because he's investigating Donald Trump and seeing all the corruption that's within this administration, that you guys are going to try to squash an investigation?
Well, first of all, let me say that I was chairman of the House Judiciary Committee, which has oversight over the FBI for six years in the last decade. I had a very professional relationship with Director Mueller. I didn't get involved in specific investigations, you know. However, he had some management problems there. His predecessors were never able to sign a contract to have a virtual case management system. And, you know, it cost the taxpayers, because of the mistakes of his predecessor, over a quarter of a billion dollars. And, you know, I worked with him to get the case management system, and he recommended that the Civil Division of the Justice Department sue the contractors that defaulted on the contract. And we recouped some, but not all of the money. You know, my position on the current investigation is, first of all, independent counsel statutes and special counsel statutes, I think, are bad. Because it basically, you know, allows the counsel to decide what they want to investigate, have a budget that is unlimited, and also decide when they're done. And nobody else can do that. And as a result, I let the independent counsel statute, which was the Ken Starr statute, you know, expire because it was a bad law. And when it ran its course in 2003, we didn't have that. As far as Mueller goes, you know, Mueller has had over a year and $17 million to be able to look into what he was appointed to look into, which are alleged allegations of collusion between the Trump campaign and the Russians. There have been no indictments that have been issued on that subject by a grand jury.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty indictments.
No, there have been 20 indictments, but not on the subject of collusion with the Russians. That's the issue. And, you know, I honestly think that the time has come for him to either get indictments for what he was appointed to look into, and if there was criminal activity, to get the evidence, to get a grand jury to indict people, or to issue a report to Congress and the public, let Congress and the public debate the report and end his investigation.
If I may, I mean, I don't want to cut anybody else's time. But we want a gate-to-go greener. And also, if you guys do what you want, which is report to Congress, Nunes is going to go do what he did last time and run over to Trump and tell him everything, which we don't want to do.
Well, you know, let me say this. The report the special counsel will make will be a report to Congress as a whole and to the public. So this will be a public report that, you know, anybody can go get a hold of a copy of, either a print copy or go online, you know, to get it and read, you know, what his conclusions were. Now, there's no question in my mind that there was corruption in the Justice Department, you know, as well. And I know that Mueller and Comey were best buddies when Mueller was FBI director and Comey was the deputy attorney general, you know, which had, the deputy attorney general has the operational control, you know, over the Justice Department. The AG does not do operations as deputy does that. You know, I don't think, you know, that should make any difference. And, you know, where I criticize Comey, as one who has done oversight over justice for a while, is that he, rather than the Justice Department, announced in July of last year the termination of the investigation, or July of '16, I'm sorry, the investigation into Hillary Clinton. That's never been done by an FBI director before. If he has the goods on somebody, or he says he can't get the goods on somebody, that's always been either the attorney general or the deputy attorney general that makes that announcement. And Comey's, I think Comey's worst mistake was announcing it himself.
Why did he announce it?
Well, I don't know why he announced it. You know, that was...
Because Loretta Lynch wasn't allowed to, I thought.
Well, but Loretta Lynch had a deputy and an assistant attorney general on the Criminal Division. And they could have announced it, you know, if Loretta Lynch recused herself. Now, I don't recall that she recused herself. You know, there were all kinds of allegations of her meeting on the tarmac with Bill Clinton at the Phoenix Airport, which was just a couple of weeks before Comey's press conference. But the standard operating procedure, you know, for the Justice Department has always been that the announcement of indictment or exoneration, depending upon what the investigation came up with, was made either by the attorney general or the deputy attorney general or the assistant attorney general for the Criminal Division. And I don't know why Comey decided to make it himself. And you know, then when they got a hold of Anthony Weiner's computer a couple of weeks before the election, you know, then that had to be looked at to see whether his then-wife, Huma Abedin, who was, you know, kind of the alter ego for Mrs. Clinton, you know, had anything that was relevant on that computer. And so Comey had to reopen it, and reopen it, you know, and then announce that there was nothing relevant there.
The 20 indictments, you said there's nothing involving with collusion. We don't know that there's anything involved with Russian collusion until the investigation is over.
No, that's not correct. You know, when somebody is indicted, you know, and the grand jury returns an indictment, it is filed with the federal court that has juris- it is filed with the federal court that has jurisdiction over it. That's all up online, and anybody can see what is alleged in the indictment. Now, the indictment is an accusation, and it is up to the prosecutor to prove what is in the indictment beyond a reasonable doubt in the mind of all 12 jurors. But, you know, what Mueller's team, you know, is accusing the people who he's indicted, and, you know, a number of them are Russians, are that's all online, and you can go in and look at it. And anybody else can, too.
So Papadopoulos, who is in Trump's campaign, is colluding with Russia. That's what the indictment is pretty much about.
Well, Papadopoulos was a minor figure in the Trump campaign, and where this information came from, and it's all hearsay, is he got drunk in London and bragged about himself to the Australian ambassador to the United Kingdom, you know, who wrote a classified memo to Australian intelligence that shared it with our intelligence. You know, I could say in the case of General Flynn that he decided to plead guilty to lying to the FBI for a question the FBI never asked him because he was being bankrupted because he had to spend his own money on his defense, you know. He lost his...
He was also colluding with Russia. He was talking to...
No, he was... Yeah, he was the national security advisor designate after the election and before the inauguration. You know, and one of the things that foreign diplomats do, you know, is they go around and they have interviews, and they want to get to know people, you know. I get requests from foreign ambassadors...
It wasn't legal.
It's legal.
No, it was illegal.
No, it's legal. I get requests from foreign ambassadors all the time because I'm on the Foreign Affairs Committee, and I take those meetings that I think are relevant, and I decline the meetings that I think are irrelevant. I meet with them in the office, they tell me what they want to tell me, I ask questions if they're appropriate, and, you know, again, that's that. And, you know, that's part of the job of a foreign ambassador.
And then the Trump Tower meeting?
The Trump Tower meeting...
That's not collusion to you?
No, it's not collusion because it was after the election. Flynn had been named...
Before the election.
Flynn had been named National Security Advisor Designate by the president-elect...
Trump Tower was before the election. Sorry, sir.
President-elect of the United States. And what Flynn pled guilty to, and let me repeat this, was lying to the FBI on a question that the FBI never asked. Now, you think about that kind of entrapment. You know, you end up, and you're going to have to spend...
Why did he lie about it?
He couldn't lie because they didn't ask that question. Do you understand that? He pled guilty because he couldn't afford to defend himself. He lost his house, he'd lost his life savings, and he was facing hundreds of thousands of legal bills, you know, if he was to defend himself and take the case to the jury against the largest law firm in the world, the United States Department of Justice. So he pled guilty to lying about a question that he was never asked. Now, how can you lie about a question you were never asked?
I'm sorry, I never heard that.
Well, that's what happened.
It was asked after I got out.
Okay. Man, I listen, I got to head on down to Exonia. Let me make a suggestion to you because you never heard that. If you can spend one-fifth of your time watching Fox News rather than MSNBC, maybe you would get the other side of the issue because there are good points on both sides. So thank you all for coming, and keep the cards and letters coming. Have a good one, Carl.
Thank you.